Like to call to order the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Before we start, just a technology announcement, I guess. Our microphones, the amplifier is not picking up. Let me back up. The amplifier has died. So if you, you won't be hearing us, but our microphones are on. And for the recording purposes and for the television purposes, it is going through. So as a board and staff, we'll have to speak in our acting voices. So if you would please join me as we honor America and as Wildcat Company presents our colors. And then we will do the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. And you may be seated. Next is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Then do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Please cast your vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. Go to our good news. Mr. Stevens, we will start with you tonight.
I have Oak Ridge High School. And 22 computer application A honors students were, are now certified as Microsoft Office Specialist in Word 2019. Oak Ridge High School has a student that has qualified for the American Invitational Mathematics Exam. And TSW, TSW Work-Based Learning now has eight students in paid part-time employment. The TSW program is now fully staffed as they have welcomed two new full-time assistants. Ten Oak Ridge High School students from Mrs. Neubenfuehr, German three honors class, took the Level Two National German Exam in January. All of them got a certificate of recognition. Four received achievement awards demonstrating that they were better than half of all National German Exam participants. One student received the bronze award and three received the gold award. These three students scored above 90 percentile and can now apply for a, for the AATGPAD National German Exam Scholarship. The scholarship allows the recipient to travel to Germany in the summer. That's the good news for Oak Ridge High School.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, I'm gonna add on just a little bit to one of Ben's statements. The work-based learning, if you want to see it in action, you need to go to Chicken Salad Chick between 11:00 and 1:00, Monday through Friday. You'll see Austin, he's an, he's a Oak Ridge High School senior there in the, in the dining room. He's a very nice young man. I met him today. Okay, let's go on to good news for Willowbrook. Rebecca Mullins, Reading Specialist, has been chosen to receive 100 new books. In September 2021, Reading is Fundamental initiated a campaign, Rally to Read 100, that promoted a way for students to re-engage in reading. Students, educators, and families were encouraged to read 100 books over the span of six months by Read Across America. As part of this initiative, Rally to Read 100 held a sweepstakes for K-5 educators to submit their names for a chance to win 100 books, and Mrs. Mullins was the winner. In addition, Willowbrook will also be recognized as a recipient of 100 books on March 2nd, 2022, Read Across America Day during RIF's Reading expires website. Also from Willowbrook, Ms. Sarah Cochran submitted artwork from her students to the Dogwood Arts Student Festival. We are pleased to announce that two pieces were again accepted this year. Congratulations to Dakota Rogers from Mrs. Wagner's fourth grade class. And Leyland Niekirk in Mrs. Martin's kindergarten class.
Ms. Agel.
Also from Willowbrook, Willowbrook will be participating in Engineers Day in partnership with the Oak Ridge National Lab. Our fourth grade will be working virtually with Amelia Campbell, an engineer from ORNL. Ms. Campbell is an Oak Ridge native and a Robertsville Ram. She will be talking with our students about her project called Eater, an international project working on proving the viability of nuclear fusion as a new way of generating electricity. Students will learn what is an engineer and what is fusion. Kindergarten and third grade teachers are working hard to engage in growing their craft by engaging in a book series in reading and math. They're working through the book Know Better, Do Better, and Building Thinking Classrooms for Math. They're working with Dr. Garner and other teachers in the district who have started this process. This is good news because it shows the amazing personnel we have at every school, working to get better every day.
Okay, my good news is from Robertsville. Robertsville Middle School TSA competed in the TSA Regional Championship on January 14th. The students placed first in biotechnology, career prep, children's stories, inventions, and innovations, off-the-grid, and problem solving. Sounds like they took first in most of all the events. Congratulations to two Robertsville eighth-grade art students who were chosen to display their pieces in the 2022 Dogwood Arts Synergy Exhibition in Knoxville. The artwork entitled Mushroom World and Sandwich Time will be on exhibit March the 2nd through the 23rd and concludes with a reception and awards ceremony at the Clayton Center for the Arts. And that's just some of the good news taking place in our schools at this time. So next, we will move on to the public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you wish to speak at that time. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Second. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to items for action. First item is approval of the Oak Ridge High School Students of Undergraduate Physics or the Soup Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of ORHS Students of Undergraduate Physics Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the form that was submitted, all students interested in physics are welcome to this club, and they're gonna be studying physics together, organizing and attending physics competitions and events, probably the UTK Engineering Day.
Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Agel.
I'd love to see a club where students want to study.
That is a good thing.
Hearing none, the motion on the board is approval of the Students of Undergraduate Physics Club. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Navy Junior ROTC Campus Leave Request to Normandy, France. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Oak Ridge High School NJROTC request to travel to Normandy, France to participate in the 80th Anniversary D-Day Parade in June of 2024.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
I think this is pretty self-explanatory, but we also heard from Chief Nichols, who's here in attendance as well, if there's any more questions about the trip.
Ms. McLean.
I saw in the form that you have.
I don't know why we still turn, we wanna get right.
You have two chaperones. I assume there'll be some parent chaperones also going.
Yes, ma'am. What we'll do is obviously keep it the 15 to 1 ratios. Right now, we've, we've just, we've got a preliminary sign-up of kids who are currently in high school that are interested in attending. Something that if with, once we receive board approval, what we'll do is we'll really push forward on this. Actually, seventh graders, current seventh graders, eighth graders, freshmen and sophomores will be eligible to attend this trip because they'll, they'll be at the high school level at the time. I was just doing some quick calculations. Since we've got a couple of years to make it a little bit easier financially for anybody interested, I'm, I would like to do, set it up, the payment for it, just because it's gonna be about $4,500 a person. And it's to set that up in about 25 monthly payments of about $180 a month, which will be a whole lot easier than, you know, a smaller number of larger payments. And we, we would welcome, you know, any, any interested persons, parents and students of seventh and eighth graders to, who are interested in maybe being a part of that, being a part of ROTC, to contact Commander Clem or myself, and we can go ahead and, we would include them in fundraising opportunities that we'll be doing, because we'll be doing a lot of those, y'all know, we do a lot of fundraising. But we wanna make it as, as fiscally easy as possible on, on the participants this year and that number would, you know, obviously 15 to 1 ratio.
And obviously, some of the details are lacking. We just wanna make sure the board would approve this trip because basically we need to say yes to fundraising. And then prior to the trip, we'll give you the itinerary and the rest of the information that's missing at this time, so.
I did bring copies of the, the itinerary. It's, I think it's June 3rd through the 11th. And also, it has a breakdown of the, the price package with the airfare. And if you guys would, would like to have a copy of that, I have some here for you.
So kind of chief, a follow-up on Ms. McLean's question. The number you listed there was a total of 30, but there, there could be more?
It, it depends on the interest that we have. Obviously, the cost scares a lot of people away. So, and that's why we wanna try to make it as, as easy as possible and, and get those seventh and eighth graders, current seventh and eighth graders involved now if they're interested in, in doing so. Yeah, we, you know, it could go up or it could go down depending on the interest of it.
Other questions?
No, this is, it just gives us two years to pray real hard it cools down.
And, and like, like you and I mentioned about the Hawaii trip, the, obviously COVID caveat, you know, obviously we know what's going on over there now and, and we would expect the board to, you know, we're, we're gonna be looking at that, obviously. And, and if anything were to get crazy over there, we would obviously be looking for the plug to be pulled and, and we're gonna be very wise about everything. And obviously, you know, the whole, we've gotta get people enough notice, so we gotta get passports and get all of, all of the names and all the information to, to our, the tour program, historical programs, so that they can get that cleared with the, the French government and all that other good stuff. So there will be timeframes and, and checkpoints throughout the, the journey here that we have to meet with everybody.
Yeah, it's a, it's an awesome sight.
I've, 21 years and 30 days in the Navy, been, been to France numerous times, but I've never been to Normandy, so this has been a dream. So it's gonna be cool and to be able to take our kids there, to be able to experience it. And again, I use Mr. Livacey as an example because his dad was not in the initial wave, but he landed at Utah Beach a few days later, so. And I think he was, was wanting to be a chaperone on the, on the trip as well, and that's gonna be awesome. It's, it's, I don't know. Hey, I'm good with that. Maybe, maybe, maybe you guys could do a board meeting remotely from, from France. And so. Any other questions? Speaking of flowers, we'll be putting in a fundraiser request for first couple, first week of April to do our spring flower sale, so. Thank y'all so much.
Good show. All right, motion on the floor is approval of the Navy Junior ROTC Campus Leave Request to Normandy, France. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Oak Ridge High School Sports Media Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the addition of the ORHS Sports Media Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the application there, they, they're gonna learn sport photography, social media, and sports writing, and they're gonna practice and develop those skills while attending ORHS sporting events.
Maybe some of these can be trained to become sports editors and writers for the Oak Ridge.
There you go.
Mr. Vaud. Yeah, just thinking about that. Questions or comments? Mr. Lay.
I'm just full of comments. Obviously, I'm sure that our parents understand, none of these clubs would be possible if it wasn't for teacher volunteers. And I just wanna go on record saying thank you. We, we just have a tremendous amount of clubs district-wide, and once again, that's just due to the commitment and generosity of our teachers.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. Very important because as you say, if it wasn't, we wouldn't have them. All right, motion on the floor is approval of the Sports Media Club at Oak Ridge High School. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase of Woodland Elementary Cafeteria Tables. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of replacement cafeteria tables for Woodland Elementary.
Heard the recommendation from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the memo there, we're gonna purchase these tables from Ernie Morris Enterprises at a total cost of $35,860, and that'll be paid for out of the budgeted cafeteria funds.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase and installation of middle school marquee signs. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase and installation of new marquee signs for Jefferson and Robertsville from Golden Rule Signs in the amount of $65,731.94.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
As the board knows, you've seen the preschool and the high school sign, this is from the same company, so we're hoping that we can do two of these signs a year so that we can update all of our building signs out front.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean.
So that means that the elementary schools will, in the next couple of years?
That's, that's our hope, and this next budget will have two elementary signs for the FY23 budget.
Great. I saw today at Jefferson, no, at Robertsville, the facilities guy standing on top of a ladder, sifting through each of the ladders, putting them on the thing, so.
With a stick holding up the.
Well, no, he was up on the ladder, right there. So, um, yeah, I know at all the schools, that would be great to have. Thank you.
It may have said this in the information, if it did, I don't remember it. What is our timeframe of getting these? I know things are still difficult sometimes to, to be when you would like for them to be here.
The last information we have is six to eight weeks upon order.
Do they do installation or do we?
They will do the installation.
They do? Okay, thanks, Alan.
Sure.
Motion on the floor is approval of purchase and installation of middle school marquee signs. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the FY22 Jobs for the Future. Do you say that SISTEM?
Dr. Cross? Is it just system?
You still say it systems? I like SISTEM better. Grant, Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY22 Jobs for the Future System Grant.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This item and the next two are all about our I-Schools grant that we received with Dr. Buckner. And as you can see here, this is gonna align the I-Schools coursework model with an opportunity to build a site-based, work-based learning center where students make products for industry. The money will be used to purchase additional equipment for the job shop and to pay stipends for after-hours work by Dr. Buckner and other mentors who will run the program. So great, great opportunity for our students.
Comments or questions? Ms. Agel.
Is this sort of like what we saw in the welding lab, where they were looking to produce something that could be sold?
I think so, but this will be on a grander scale, so we'll be working directly with some area companies, Tennessee Tool, those types of things. Dr. Cross, anything else to add there, Dr. Cross?
Um, when we got the I-School grant, it was, it was. We applied with Oak Ridge Tool, Tennessee Tool, and Low Car. And then those are not the only people that we would like to work with, so if other people have products that they would like for our students to make or learn how to, like, reiterate, iterate, reiterate product design and then actual implementation, and then we can, we've got lots of different kinds of fabrication, so we'll be able to fabricate in our shop and actually sell real products to real people. We have several possible clients, but those three we've applied for the grant with.
Any other questions? Motion on the floor is approval of the FY22 Jobs for the Future Grant. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G is the purchase of a water jet cutting system for the I-School program. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a water jet cutting system for I-School programs.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the memo, this, this advanced water jet cutting system will be used for advanced manufacturing applications and skills in the new I-School program. And because we received that grant in, in the past, that, that's coming out of that grant for $123,260. So just wonderful that we're able to do that with that grant.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H is the purchase of HSD Smart Shop CNC Router. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a Smart Shop CNC router for the I-School program.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
Again, another machine for the high school program for advanced manufacturing, and this one is $47,000, $47,250, again, coming out of the grant that we earned a year ago.
Comments or questions?
We can certainly do that, can't we, Dr. Cross? Get some pictures to the board?
No, we, we need to have a chance to learn how to use it. I would love to.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of time when it's all set up for some show and tell, that's for sure.
This is neither here nor there on that, but tomorrow on the Chambers Bridge, and I've drawn them in a while.
Dr. Buckner, yeah.
Is the featured person on there. So if you have questions about any of this, it'd be a good time to sign up and go and ask those questions and learn about it. Or put your name in to be the first on the list to learn how to use them. Okay, motion on the floor is the purchase of HSD Smart Shop CNC Router. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to items for information, both the enrollment and attendance reports. Mr. Lay.
Yes, sir. I'll just point out some of the important stuff. If you look at basically this, the fifth reporting period in comparison to the fourth reporting period for attendance and enrollment, we are up 37 students. If you look at how we compare to this time last year, we are, our enrollment has increased by 176 students. So we are continuing to see our enrollment increase, and we will continue to prepare and, and work towards that challenge. As I looked at the graphs as far as attendance, of course, we see the spike, and given what we have had with COVID in the past six weeks, that's what one would expect. But I am pleased, I think all but two schools, if we look at how we're measuring this year, we are below some of the spikes we have seen in the past. So all in all, I'm pleased, and, and things are looking good, and we're still continuing to hope that soon we will return to total normalcy. Our average absenteeism has been around 6% each day, which is about normal for Oak Ridge Schools. So we are now past, once again, that peak, and we have more students and staff in school, and we're pleased, so.
This, this will probably be, assuming that this trend continues, as we talked about in our work session with the board the other day, we will continue to make sure we keep our eye on this, because it will, obviously, as we talked about there, have, have, or could have, a major impact on our school population. So Dr. Borchers and I had an opportunity to meet just recently with the city manager and the mayor, and this was one of the topics that we discussed, and they were interested in the new program that we have, that will, as you saw, that will plot growth. This is something that, as we said, we've wondered about, and now we don't have to wonder anymore because it's happening. And we hope it continues to happen. It just creates issues, but that's why we're here, is to deal with those issues. It's a good problem to have to deal with in most all respects. Any other, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll move on then next to the financial report. Ms. Van Dyk, anything you would like to add?
No, it's just business as usual.
That's always the best report to get. This probably would be appropriate time to throw this in. As we all know, we've received information from last week on the proposed new educational funding for schools across the state of Tennessee to replace the BP. A lot of unanswered questions, a lot of discussion to be had. We know that when the members of the legislature get their hands on it, who knows what might happen at that point in time. So the best thing to say is stay in tune, and we're staying on top of this, and we'll, I hate to say it this way, but we'll know when we know what's going to happen. Okay, moving from there to other items for discussion, any old business or new business? From anyone? Communications, our Volunteer of the Year submittals have ended. So next month at our meeting, we will need to select a Volunteer of the Year, and I will send out next week the names and some reminders about those individuals, so you can be thinking about it. Ms. Lammehardt and I had a discussion about this, and I think next year, we're going to make a change in how we do this that might make it a little more effective and efficient. More information forthcoming, but probably what we'll do is ask each school to submit one volunteer from their school, have all of those volunteers submit the information, and then from that volunteer from each school, the board would then select a Volunteer of the Year. We're still working on the details, but that's kind of where we're leaning to go in that direction. We do, the deadline is May the 1st for that. So Dr. Adams, we need to be working on the student to have to the board by our next Would remind the board that the Maskers production begins this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I believe it's called A Walk in the Woods. Looks to be another exciting production by that group. This Wednesday, the board will visit Secret City Academy at 8:30. On the 4th is the dedication of the Robert Moss Library at Jefferson at 4:00 PM. On the 9th, the board will be paying their visit to transportation, which actually will be in the form of a bus trip this year, and we're meeting here at 8:30 that morning. And then our next board meeting will be the 28th of next month. Any comments or questions from the board? Yes?
I had the visit for the Robert Moss Library dedication as the third. Am I wrong?
It's Thursday. Is that the 3rd? Well, have I got it wrong? Thank you for catching that. It is the 3rd. You're right. Thank you. Still at 4 o'clock, right? We'll look forward to that. Anything else? All right, Lynn, thank you. Gentlemen in the back, thank you as well. Thank you all for being here, taking your time to join us tonight, and have a good spring break. Burned it. We are adjourned.